I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council, special September ninth meeting of order. If you please rise for the pledge allegiance led by me and remain standing for the invocation by Mr. Trippit.
Pledge allegiance to the citizens of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, and Father, we thank you for all your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, God individually, our families, and on this community, Lord. We ask, Lord, for your continued provision and blessing on our community. And Father, as we thank you for our blessings, we lift up those who are less fortunate, Lord, who've had heartbreak in the last few days. Lord, we lift up our neighbors in the Bahamas, Lord, who are suffering greatly, and all the people have lost their lives, their property. God, we ask you to be with them. Lord, we ask you to restore them and make them whole, and Lord, in this process, we ask you to help us to be your hands and feet in helping them. Father, we lift up this body to you tonight as they debate the city's business. Father, grant them wisdom, guidance, and direction, and everything that is said and done be acceptable in your sight. Father, we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I'll bring this down to item number four, citizens' comments. Are there's anyone here that would like to address the council? If so, please come up to the front, state your, oh, state your name, address, and try to keep it within three minutes if you can.
Good afternoon. My name is Annette Boykin. I stay at five oh three D, Elder Circle. And I come here not to make a complaint, but to just see why it has not been, take something done about Nazir Lane, Bristol Lake. But it's Nazir Lane because of what happened four or five years ago. I don't stay out there, but I have a lot of friends, families, have a lot of children that's, you know, they say it takes a village to raise. But these kids stay out there in a place where you wouldn't want your kids probably to not even visit, much less stay. It's a lot of single parents and I'm just gonna talk about the trash cans. It's one big dumpster for them to put their trash in. And I was out there on last Monday, and the trash was picked up that Friday, but by that Monday, it was already filled up. So if they had some trash on Tuesday and Wednesday and didn't get it exactly in the dumpster, you know, it's something y'all got that y'all find them and stuff. But it's glass, not even talking about the Leary Lake out there. This is not the first time you all have heard of it. And we stayed at Beautifying Carrollton, Georgia. How do we skip out certain places? How do we do that? I was raised, and like y'all, you know, I was raised that everybody is treated and treated equally. Kids, the kids deserve a better place. These are struggling mothers. The rent is high. Yes, I say, no, y'all say they're not privately owned, but somehow y'all got a sheriff out there and a police. Why? Sometimes it seem like the city, they don't do nothing but monitor the black communities for fines and tickets and whatever. But yes, if you do wrong, you gotta pay for it. I ain't perfect. I did wrong, but I wanted, once realized that. I want to make a difference in this world, not for me, because my life is in God's hands. I have a lot of different personal circumstance going on, but my duty is to be active for the community. And I'm asking you all, that know about the Leary Lake out there at Nazir Lane? And know about what needs to be done out there instead of sending a police and a sheriff? I understand these are kids, these are single people in poverty trying to make it. I am tired of people getting a grant to tell us we still poor and we in poverty, and then you go home and eat you a steak. That's all I got to say.
Um, I would like to address some of the things, even though that is not my ward, that she just mentioned. If I may, um, first of all, Ms. Boykin, thank you for your, your words and your wisdom just now. This is outside of my jurisdiction right now that, that ward is not being represented by anyone if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Well, Jim is out, he's absent. Jim, Jim Waters is absent, but that is his ward. But I would like to, I go there a lot, and the people of Bristol Lakes called me because they think I'm their city councilman, but I'm not. But I would like to ask the city to bring more dumpsters out. I've seen that one dumpster that's at the end of the street at that dead end, and it is like being in a third world country. And to me, if all of Carrollton is not a part of the big circle and the big wheel, then if, if there's one weak leg, then the whole thing is weak, in my opinion. And Bristol Lakes is a weak, a very, very weak leg that needs to be addressed. So if Mike, if you could put more, where is Mike? If you could put more dumpsters out there so they can have a better, I guess, a better system in place, Ms. Boykin. Oh, there we go. Can we do that, Mike? Yeah, it's immaculate. Okay, hold that thought too about what you just said about cleaning up your own neighborhood and taking care of your, because that needs to be, yes, ma'am. Yeah, that needs to be addressed too, but right now, Mike, can we do that? Can everybody over there get their own, because that's the problem. You got all those people putting it in that one little, they can't. Okay, all right, so if we could get more dumpsters over there, is that possible? Okay, and the next one is a playground. That's the complaint that I've gotten like every day about Bristol Lakes is they need some sort of playground. Tim, let's do something to get them, and I know that's private property, but we bought three of those apartments, like she just said, and put officers and sheriffs over there. Let's buy a little piece of property over there if we can, from the homeowners association or from whomever, because those children need something to do. You go through there, you almost run over them because they're in the streets. Walt, did you raise your hand, say you're gonna pay for it? Is that what you? Okay, for the last playground that was supposed to be built there? Oh, volleyball. Yeah, when I was a little kid, I didn't, I can't reach a volleyball net if I'm three. I don't even know what that is. So can we possibly, and I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes, or, but we need to do something about a playground over there. And Ms. Boykin, you get those folks together, bring them here and raise hell at, listen, get, get them together, bring them here every time, raise hell and rattle some bones until you get something done up here. You hear me? And you got my support all the way, all right? It's outside of my jurisdiction, but I'll raise hell with you to get it done. Tim, I'm sorry.
Again, that's an area where we go and we send crews in and pick up trash all the time, and we do it all the time.
We gotta do something about that too, but.
So I don't, I don't, again, if there was a homeowners association, they would keep it up. That would be a lot, that would be helpful. That's the only neighborhood where we have to do that, and we do it all the time. As far as finding folks, oh, if they, if we have cameras over there, it's the only neighborhood where we have cameras. They, if they throw the trash on the ground, because we were trying to help the neighbors, the neighbors were complaining about the trash being on the ground. If they throw it on the ground, we write them a ticket. That was the only way to stop them throwing it on the ground.
Okay, but about the playground, let's work, all right, this is, this is not a question, a question, this is something we're gonna do. Let's work as a council, as a body, let's work with these people to find a way to implement some sort of a playground, a swing set, something that little kids can play on. Not necessarily, I mean, a volleyball net is great, but something that the little kids can do too.
We can cert, we will certainly.
Yeah, let's look into that, please.
Certainly look at that.
And then the water retention lake, I'm not sure what's going on with the water retention. I've seen that before, and it was pretty bubbly and nasty, and children were playing around it.
It's a pond on other people's property to the east of there, and it's, it's just a pond, it's somebody else's pond, and it's not a, it's not a detention pond that anybody built for this development. It's a pond that's been there for years, and so.
It's like maybe eight feet from one of the apartments. You know, you know, it's really, really close.
Then I'm thinking of the wrong pond. I need to see what.
Am I right about that little pond that's right there behind there? Trash, bikes, big wheels.
Okay, I'll, I'll go out there tomorrow myself.
Yeah, it's, Tim, it's really, really bad. Okay, so then the unsupervised children, the city can't really do anything about that, but what, what needs to happen is your church or your civic groups or somebody who really cares about people and really cares about kids need to go over there and help those parents, maybe train those parents on ways to be better parents. Because there is a missing link, y'all know that, in the generation that's coming up now. Some people just don't have the tools to take care of their kids. So that's, that's, that's a serious problem that the community needs to work on with the people over in Bristol Lakes. They need to work to keep their own yards clean too, because I did a cleanup over at Tanyard Ranch. It was terrible, but the problem was people weren't picking up their own trash. I had to knock on doors and beg people to pick up trash. So that's like a personal thing that people need to start doing. But the unsightly properties and the derelict, derelict properties over there, Tim, if we could find the homeowners and find them for like, you know, the paneling falling off the outside of the house. The, you know, the roofs caving in or whatever the situation may, there's a lot, the facades are falling off some of the apartments over there. So if we could find who owns those, because they're not owned by the people who live in them, because people bought those who don't live in this community. And now you have, you know, poor people living in these people's properties paying all this rent, but the houses are falling apart. So we need to find who own those properties and then find them until they clean up their properties. That, that's something that really needs to happen. And then too, if Peter, I don't know if Peter's in here, I don't know how, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I don't know how we can do it. But those children need to be involved in some type of programs. Or somebody's clapping. If we could contact the Boys and Girls Club, somebody, West Carrollton Recreation Center, to help get some of those kids off the streets. Because when you go through there, they're jumping on the back of your car, hanging on. It's, it's just like going through a third world country. And if you haven't been, just drive through tonight, you're gonna be heartbroken. You can go through at two AM and they're gonna be outside, right, Ms. Boykin?
Right, and they're active, and it's like, like a game, too. But they don't even have a sidewalk. Everybody wonder why they stand in the street. They don't have a sidewalk to walk in. And even with all the trash, yes, I remember with Pastor Shannon, Jim Waters going out there cleaning up. But it's so much that has been filled up that if we just tear that dumpster thing down, give them their own Kirby, it would be a better place. And get good, the kids a playground, because they can't even get the lunches in the summertime because it's not a park. And everybody, you realize these apartments was made for college students, but when the system crashed and everybody owned them. But even, I remember one time we said, I don't stay there, but I would have, a mentor program, I would have went in and out at different times to be there for the kids. Not only the kids, but the mothers, the, the people there. The police and sheriff is not the answer. Because I remember one time I was out there and the police drove in and the kids was running. I was like, what y'all running for?
Why don't you find, you know, one mother in the community for one family, each one, I'm saying like each one, reach one. If we get thirty mothers and take them over, if you find thirty mothers to join you who believe in what you believe in, who think the way you believe in, we go over there and take that community back. That can happen. I mean, we can't do that part. We can find people and go arrest people, but we can't do any of that other stuff, so I think we gotta move on. Ms. Boykin, I love you and thank you.
Anyone else?
I wanted to speak about West Chandler Lane. Is this the time to do it or to wait?
Wait.
Wait, okay, well, just regarding the issue we were just talking about, I think, you know, part of the problem is with the trash is, is access? Like if, and also the yards being so bad is because of they can't park in the street. It's like, you know, they should, yes, they should pull around and park behind their houses, but it's not convenient. It's not, you know, we have the, how the ideal human would behave, and you have how people behave, and they, they wanna park in front of their house, but they can't because they'll get ticketed, so they end up parking on their lawn. The lawn turns into a dirt mud pit because they're parking their cars there, grass can't grow. But also you've got a neighborhood full of, you know, working moms with lots of kids. You got a dumpster that's maybe a quarter mile away, you got a lot of trash, and just access, just a simple problem of access can solve this, like. So I don't, I'm, I'm a mom, I can't, I, I gotta walk my trash a quarter mile, I got three or four bags, I gotta send my kids down there walking with the trash, or I gotta drive my trash. I mean, what people should do, what they actually do are different, so they're gonna leave their trash at their house, they're gonna leave it wherever's convenient. So just have, I know it was said that a Kirby can't happen, but a simple fix like that could go a long way. I wanna talk about West Chandler too, but I'll.
But to yours, there are about fourteen, fifteen units pushed together. So if you're outside the front of your unit and you wanna go to the back of your house, you have to walk around fourteen or fifteen units to go all the way to the back of your, it could take you twenty minutes to get to your bag.
And also that if you're, if you're a short woman and you gotta haul four bags of trash over really high clearance on a dumpster, you're gonna miss. You're gonna miss, and you're, then you got broken glass and food and spoiled stuff everywhere, and you're not, so it's just a, it's a practical matter that a little bit of, you know, a little bit of extra help. Maybe even steps up to a dumpster, like the extra pickup, but steps for people who are short, kids carrying trash can't reach it, can't, they don't aim good. I mean, just things to think about.
And that trash, that dumpster also is not designed like other, other apartment complexes dumpsters. They have that driveway that goes around them. Right. There, there's just a dumpster sitting in the middle of the street. You could run into it with a car, but at other apartment complexes, there's a ramp that goes around, and you can, you know what I'm talking about? There's a little shed over, you sit there and you throw your, your trash over, so it's a problem. It's nasty.
For just, there have been a lot of things tried out there, and they were, they wanted dumpsters closer to the buildings, so we put them in the cul-de-sac when you first come in. Then people didn't want those unsightly dumpsters in the cul-de-sac, so we put dumpsters in just about every location. We moved them around. At one time, there were two eight yards, so which were easier to put the trash in, and the forty yard roll-off. Mike, what's out there now? So there's a forty, but there's an eight that can be reached too, and I know we dumps them all the time, so, I mean, I'll go out there myself again tomorrow. I've been out there lots of times. We, we take this very seriously. We have tried and tried and tried a lot of options. The problem with this thing, it was zoned in December of two thousand and three before any of us got here, and it, they didn't contemplate parking right. They didn't contemplate dumpsters right. It was supposed to have a compactor. It went broke, and they didn't put the compactor in, and other people own the property. But now, Mr. Byrd's asked us to look at a park, we're gonna look at a park. We may have to condemn property to do it. Y'all may have to, you know, vote to do that, but we'll look at that. Oh, I'm just telling you, this is not something that we've not put a lot of effort in and a lot of thought in. I see Superintendent Alberta's nodding back there. I know he's put a lot of effort in, and a lot of churches that worked out there. Kathy Parsons had someone living there mentoring people, so I just, I just don't want anybody to get the impression that we don't care, that we haven't tried. We moved, we bought five units and moved five police officers out there to help with the crime, and it did help with the crime. So we're doing everything we know to do, and we're open to ideas, and if you have better ideas, we wanna hear them.
And I'm not knocking anybody's ideas, I'm just saying we just need to keep trying and trying and trying till we get it right, all right? So thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, number five, minutes. So I had a chance to reread the minutes from the last meeting.
I make a motion we approve the minutes from August fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Mayor and council announcements. Anybody got anything they'd like to say?
Um, I, I would just like to, again, I'm gonna say what I always say, I would like to thank our staff for being one hundred percent accessible. Um, anytime I need something, I can call on you guys. You always answer, you always respond in a swift and prompt way. And those things are not for me personally, it's for our constituents and our citizens, and that's what it's all about, and that's how it should be. So I consider myself blessed to be on a body where I can make a phone call and just make magic in minutes. And that's wonderful, and I applaud you all for that. I thank you for your efforts, and I thank you for pushing to be better at what you do, even though you're already great, but we, let's always push to be better at what we do every single day.
Annette, I wanna congratulate city staff and everybody that's involved in the race this weekend. It was a great success. I think it's our first annual, I expect next year will be much larger. I don't see how, but it will probably surely be larger. I'd like to also remind everybody to come out Thursday night for Taste of Carrollton. I think it starts five thirty, is that right, Erica? Five thirty to eight, please come out and support the local restaurants in town. And I think that's about all I've got to.
Just wanna dito what the mayor said, the half marathon was just fantastic, and I've heard nothing but great things about it. The Ben Haggard concert was excellent. Uh, Taste of Carrollton again is Thursday. The Cultural Arts Center got a lot of things happening there. It is a great time to be a part of this city. It is a great place to be, and just our staff is what makes it what it is, and our citizens. Thank you.
Going down to item number eight, approval of agenda items for consideration.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda that, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda, but we strike item seven.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on it? All in favor, please raise your hand to approve the agenda, striking item number seven. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Carrollton City Schools Children Book Dedication. Tim? Dr. Albertis, excuse me.
Dr. Albertis is here to, to speak to this item.
Well, good evening. I'm Mark Albertis with Carrollton City Schools. I wanna thank the mayor, the council, and the city manager for having us here tonight. We value and appreciate our partnership with the city, and we, we wanted to show you guys a project that we've been working on for about a year and a half. And just to back up a little bit, about three years ago, we really put an emphasis on literacy, teaching, uh, teaching reading and writing, and really putting a emphasis on it, not only in the classroom, but with special projects. And here tonight, we have Ms. Anna Clifton, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and also Ms., Mr. Ian Lyle, our Assistant Principal over at the high school. And, and to present with me. Mr. Lyle here in just a minute, I'm gonna turn it over to him. He's gonna explain the project from its infancy all the way to fruition and, and whatnot. And then Ms., Ms. Clifton's gonna wrap up the presentation. So at this time, I wanna turn it over to Mr. Lyle.
Thank you. I'm Ian Lyle. I'm an Assistant Principal and the Career Tech Education Director at Carrollton High School. Uh, this project kinda grew out of my personal experience as a citizen. Uh, graduated from Carrollton High School, went to West Georgia. We've got a lot of great stuff in our town. My wife and I knew that when we settled here, we wanted to raise our family. Uh, we also value literacy. Those two kinda went together when I became an educator to create a project that would make literacy relevant for all kids and also highlight the relationship between our school system and our community. Um, we pulled a team together of teachers and students. This is truly a collaboration between all of our schools. Also involved Mrs. Wild, we're pretty deep into a system literacy initiative, so it, it felt right to, to bring it under that umbrella. And so we worked together over the course of several months, the teachers and the students created a project that will be great for the entire community, and we're very excited.
Well, thank you so much for having us this evening. We actually received a grant that printed thirty-one hundred copies of this book that we could give to our community. And so we launched this at one of the summer movie nights and gave away a couple of hundred copies to children who showed up for that event. Likewise, every pre-K and kindergarten student that started school this year was able to take a book home with them. We also have many other events that will be giving books out. We'll be placing them at our different recreation centers, at our library, area businesses, Horton Books, and those types of things. And so we would just appreciate your continued support with us. We'll also be giving away copies at the Holiday Wishes Parade this year as well. Um, we have a partnership with Tanner Medical Center that does training for new parents, and so those new families will be receiving a copy of this book as well. And we truly believe that great schools are a reflection of a great community. And so thank you for your partnership and your dedication to ensuring that our children are, are literate, because we know that it's not just a great thing for children and our families, but also for our community as it provides better opportunities for them educationally, but then likewise improved health outcomes, and then also improvement in our workforce. And so thank you so very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so the characters, and we're all created by the students, and so our main character is a dog named Troy. Uh, and he visits a lot of places in Carrollton. We, we kinda brainstormed, and he, the game is actually hide and seek. So the dog is going to key places in town and finding a student, and then they move to the next. And so the idea is that as students read this, as young people read this, they connect, and it makes it relevant because these are places in their town that they've been to. So we created it with the idea that you could really get a good connection of your community and then also visit those events, or visit those places, rather, after you finish the book.
So you'll see the Carrollton Green Belt, University of West Georgia, Tanner Medical Center, Castle Playground, our Cultural Arts Center, um, or Center for the Arts, as well as Lake Carroll and some of those other highlights. So also it's to help our families become more familiar with the community in which they live. So we'd like to present this book to you. Also, we have framed a copy. So we'd like to present this book to you. Also, um, we have framed a copy as well. And then we'd like to leave copies for you on. So hopefully you can give them to, um, a young family to promote literacy in our community.
Mike, we get a picture with you guys?
I want the wrong color.
A little bit more. Can y'all just take one big step that way? Thank you.
Brings us down to item number two, rezoning request. Uh, John R. Neal Jr. Haley?
All right. If you look in your packet for your staff analysis, you'll see that this rezoning request is for one thirty-one Loveren Road. It is from C two, which is our general commercial zoning district to M one light industry. This particular property was actually rezoned from M one to C two in two thousand and seventeen at a request for an allowance to do used car sales on part of the property. Um, in doing so, they were able to have a waiver for light manufacturing at the same time. At this, um, point, the applicant has requested to remove the used cars from the property and would like to revert the zoning back to the original M one light industry, which is compatible to the existing use of Blue Water Ropes Manufacturing.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak before or against for this motion? Mr. Neal, you got anything you wanna say?
All I just wanna say, uh, a year ago, I came to you and asked for some help. I'm a young man with an used car lot. He was getting out of prison. Uh, we had to set up everything to meet the state's requirements, which required the first rezoning and putting a county office in with, with no guarantee of him getting a license. The Lord provides sometimes. So he got a license and now we, he has a car lot at one thirteen and the north bypass. He's doing well. He sold a hundred cars so far this year. So it was a good investment for all of us. We appreciate your help on it. So now I'm wanting to do is take my land back to manufacturing where it has been for a hundred years. So. But I thank, I wanna thank y'all.
Can you tell us strategically where that land is if you don't mind? Like, help.
One thirteen.
I mean, the land that we're taking back on Loveren Road.
It's a joint of my other land.
Where, where Blue Water is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Part of Blue Water.
I'm sure I know where that is.
We just took, uh, one of my, uh, space in there and made it into a lot, made into something that the state would approve.
Yes, sir.
No guarantee it would happen.
While you're here, may I do something? I wanna tell a quick little story about you. Maybe about eight years ago, this man, I was at his shop getting rope for the kids at Carrollton Elementary School so we could jump rope on the playground. He had a dog in his shop at that time and he asked me if I would build a, uh, dog park. You remember that?
Yeah, I remember that.
He is the author of the Longview Street Dog Park. It was up in like two weeks after that. So I would like to thank you for.
The dog, but she's, didn't wanna come out tonight.
I saw her that you brought her by this weekend, but my, my dog is afraid of the dog park.
Thank all of y'all. It's for that y'all that it could happen.
So he's the one y'all need to thank for that dog park. It was his, so let's give him a hand for that. Come on.
Is there anybody here to speak against? Is there any more discussion up here on the council?
I move that we rezone, um, the one thirty-one Loveren Road from C two general commercial to M one light industry.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of this rezoning request, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Rezoning request, one point eight four acres at one fifteen and one nineteen West Chandler Street.
This second rezoning request is on West Chandler Street, which is in close proximity to the Nivalomuson Library. They're currently requesting from RM, which is residential multifamily to residential planned development. In front of you, you'll see that there are two site plans. One shows twelve single family homes and one shows eight single family homes with four townhomes. Both are viable options that the applicant has submitted. Um, so if you do choose to approve this rezoning, then we would request that you dictate which site plan as well as the additional conditions that we proposed earlier. I'll pull those up.
Can, I know there's somebody from the developer.
Hey, good evening. I'm Trey Robinson. I represent the development company and the building company. Um, a couple of things. First of all, the properties zoned currently RM, which is residential multifamily, uh, it's zoned for townhomes. We want to downgrade that or downzone that, not downgrade that. And we wanna do single family residential homes. A small section of four units of townhomes. We also, uh, a couple of the reasons. Number one, we wanna have the homes with private drives coming so we're not parking on the street. Nothing to the townhomes across the street, but they're short little driveways. You come in off the road and there's not a lot of parking there. So we wanna have our own private parking, a nice little parking area and then a park so that there's actual places for the kids to play. You know, kinda all the stuff that was being talked about early, we wanna avoid that. So we would like four townhome units so that we can have the park. One of our plans does not have that. It's got four homes in the place of the townhomes, but no park and no additional parking. If we go with the townhome area, which was actually our second choice, you actually have a park. There's a place for a gazebo, um, you know, some, an, an actual green space. And then it's got interior parking, so you don't have to worry about parking on the street. We've also proposed streetscape for trees, sidewalks and no parking on Renwood or West Chandler. So you actually pull into our private drive to get to our, get to the townhomes. Uh, we actually have, so each unit will have two parking places and a garage. And then we actually have a parking area.
Haley, Haley, do we have that? We could put up on the screen. Somewhere. Okay, this is, we'll call this one A. And then we'll call this one B with the townhomes.
Y'all, we need y'all to speak into the mic so we can record this.
Trey, we need you on the mic. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, he was asking if it will have a POA. It'll actually have a homeowners association. This is only homeowners. There's no, this is not rental. It's only homeowners. We're actually wanting to downzone it from the current use of townhomes where it's all residential multifamily to where it's actually single family, be simple, where it's only owners. It's not renters.
Gerald, do you have any questions?
Oh, um, I was just interested in hearing the city's argument, um, on the, the, I mean, we have two different, um, plans here. I know one is the city's recommendation and, and one is your recommendation to us. It's like one actually reserves some green space and the other one utilizes that green space.
The first one was.
Eliminates, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The first one was our initial plan. We, we're with city's approval and, and kind of a consent, I sat down with some of the, the city people and we actually revised it. So we wanted to have a interior parking and we wanted to have an actual park area. So we revised it from the plan that you see on your screen now to the other one that, that's, no, that one, yes. Now, I don't know what staff's recommendation, which one they're leaning to, but the one that you just showed is the one that we, we prefer.
Gerald, I'd be glad to address that. I, that's something that I'll, I'll take the blame for. Oh, honestly, whichever you guys want. If you'd rather have the quadplex with the, the green space, that's fine. Uh, I had thought that everybody in the area might rather have the individual homes. That's usually more appealing to the neighbors. And it is an area where the Green Belt's very close by, Hobbs Park's very close by, the library's next door. So it seemed like a property that didn't necessarily need green space, uh, or that, you know, those amenities. But either is fine with staff.
So Tim, you're saying you prefer breaks in between each house. Sort of like my neighborhood in a way.
Yes, sir. If you, if she'll show you that other one. And that's just my personal preference, but this is your decision. You, you know, the, you gentlemen make this decision and, uh, either is fine. Uh, there are renderings of the homes. Those renderings are binding and they're very attractive cottage style homes. Gerald, they're very similar to the homes you, you want done on, uh, they're in your package.
Oh, on, uh, MLK?
They are. They're very similar and, uh. But again, either version is fine with staff.
Mr. Gris, I have one thing too. I wanted to amend from, on the staff's recommendation. I saw on there that y'all wanted to use GAB and asphalt. I would prefer to use six inches of concrete just because it's simple for, it limits the maintenance for the homeowners that will be there. It's just gonna be a lot better for the longevity. That's just a personal preference of mine, but it, I'll go with whatever. It's actually more expensive as y'all know, but it's better for longevity. I don't have to worry about the asphalt topping, cracking and the concrete with, uh, I'd rather use six inches of, uh, concrete.
Oh, again, if they choose to approve this, let's let them do it. Let's, just to see if they choose to approve it and then let's address that.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I don't think the council would care one way or the other. I think that's something we would, we'd, we'd wanna talk about from a maintenance standpoint.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question for you. Uh, what size are your garages?
They're twenty, they're on your packet. They're, no, they're doubles. They're in there. It's twenty-two by twenty. It depends on the plan.
So two cars can get in that. That's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now I'm looking at your guest parking right here as well. Um, I think you have eight units and then maybe ten parking spaces.
I think there's twelve, but yes, sir. That's only on the second, the, on the, the other plan that Tim likes. There is no parking because the houses kinda take that up.
And so where would people, in the street?
They would park on their, in their driveways.
Each, each house has two parking spaces. Each house has a double garage and two parking spaces.
Like your normal house with a front loaded garage. They actually each have rear loaded garages with their own private driveways also. It's just additional parking.
We probably don't need to ever approve single car garages ever, ever again. That's the biggest mistake in the world.
It's not a proposal.
You're in the garage, somebody pulls behind you. If you need to move, they have to go pull out. It's just a big ol', big ol'. And somebody gotta stay out if you have two cars.
Understood.
Uh, so.
City staff did recommend if they decide to go with the four single family homes instead of the four townhomes, that they would incorporate guest parking into their other site plan. It's not in it currently, but one of the recommendations is that they would incorporate it.
Okay, good. My concern is guest parking, making sure that you have ample guest parking. And then we don't run into the problems that Ms. Boykin talked about a while ago with, you know, people in the streets and kids in the streets. So.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Um, I mean, let's, let's talk about this plan here. And Haley just said you would incorporate guest parking. Where would you incorporate on this, this plan? And you can walk up if you want to. Do you have any idea where you would incorporate? I, I can see on plan, we'll call it the Robson Plan. Okay? The Robson Plan, I see the, the parking, but for the, I guess we'll call this one the city plan. I don't see it.
I, I don't either. And the problem also is if you do it through here, you're gonna eliminate a lot of your recreational. I don't know the answer to that. If we put it where we've proposed and you have it in through here, the other reason we like that is because this, you're gonna have these people's garages staring into each other. And on the townhome version, you all have all your back porches overlooked your garages, which overlook all the green space and then all your parking. On this plan, you're gonna have your parking through here and it's gonna eliminate a lot of your recreational green space.
So what's the recreational green space?
We have a, it's in there. There's a gazebo. Um, it's got a grilling area, park benches, you know, stuff like that for the green space. There's a nice gazebo. The, the rendering's in there, is what it's supposed to be.
I, I love the rendering of the houses. They look really good. I like the wraparound porches and the doors. Really good. The dormers.
Okay, Trey, if you'll, anybody, you got, any more questions for Trey? Trey, how many square feet is your townhomes?
Uh, they're.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I gave away my packet. That's correct. That's heated square footage. That's correct.
Can we pull up a rendering of the townhomes if you don't mind? Thank you. Oh, there we go. That's nice. Pardon me if I'm, I'm lost here, but the city is recommending that they break the townhomes as well? Is that?
Honestly, uh, I thought you would prefer, they originally proposed twelve individual homes. And I thought you would, and, and there was a roadway issue that killed that, that actually made them move to this, the, uh, quadplex. And I thought you would prefer that. So I'm the person that had staff present to you two options. So if you like the quadplex better, you can do that.
I prefer this to that. How do you feel? Well, I prefer homes over, I mean, I'm like apartments all over again. Even though they're not, it's just a question of parking. And then you're parking underneath your house right there. Gases escape up.
Uh, Trey, if you'll, any more questions for Trey? And we'll open up for anybody who wants to speak against it, Gerald. Does anyone here like to speak against this rezoning request, please? Please state your name, please, ma'am, address.
Um, I'm Amy Carlson and I live at one oh four Renwood Lane. Um, I just wanted to make some comments. Then I had a couple of questions. Um, you know, when I look at pictures of representing Carrollton on websites and Facebook, I don't ever see any high density housing projects. I just see, um, pictures that represent small town charm, like our downtown area. And I think the city promotes that kind of charm to attract people to the area. And I think it's what we all love about being downtown. Um, and, you know, having that part of our community. I know there are apartment and condo complexes there, cause I live in one. But, um, that may not have been the best decision when it was made to have that kind of development. And I hope that you don't base your decision now on those past decisions that were made. Um, because a lot of times those aren't easy to change if they're not good. So I hope that you, um, are thoughtful and make a careful decision with the eye to the future and what we want our town to look like. And I think we want it to have history and charm and be a place where people want to raise families and be part of a community and not just, um, a bedroom community for Atlanta. I know last time that some people expressed concern over all the old growth trees on that lot. Um, you know, they represent a feeling of beauty that, um, once they're gone, you can't restore it. I know that you have a policy for replanting, but I wonder who guarantees that they are, um, given a good chance of survival. And if they don't survive, who monitors that and make sure all that's taken care of? Um, I know that changes in growth are expected and they're welcomed if they're done thoughtfully. But does that mean we have to cram as many houses as possible on a small lot just so that somebody can make more money off of each one that is built? Why can't we limit it to fewer houses and preserve? Why can't we limit it to fewer houses and preserve the charm of our downtown? You know, these decisions aren't easily undone. I think our bank headquarters is a good example of that, something that we're all trying to rectify now. So, those were my comments. Last time, y'all said you were gonna do an onsite survey, and I haven't heard any results of that. Because of the shape, the property, it slopes, and a lot of it is not buildable. I don't know, I thought you said that...
When they, if this is approved and they do submit plans, they'll have to submit studies. And at that point, the city engineer will review it, and they'll look and they'll make sure that if there's any buffers, they can encroach in those and that they'll keep that secure and pristine with what's existing. But they don't have to submit that during rezoning.
Seems a little backwards to me, but... My utilities are over there on that side of the street. What about that? We, Renwood, we have underground utilities that are on that side of the street. So I just wondered how that was gonna be addressed.
I mean, the way it works is they don't wanna spend money designing it till they know they got their zoning. And when they get their zoning, they'll have to meet the city standards on their utilities. Now, I don't personally know where the water line lays there or the sewer, but they're gonna have to work that in, I'm sure.
Well, my power, everything is on the other side of the street.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to get it over there at their expense. You know, they'll have to, they'll have to have power run to it at their expense. Same with if they have gas, the same with gas, and certainly they'll pay for the water and sewer to be running there. But the reality is, a developer's not gonna spend that money doing a hard design till he knows he's got his zoning.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name's Dawn Goodwin at 418 North Cliff Street.
Ma'am, can you...
Sorry, Dawn Goodwin at 418 North Cliff Street. I'm glad to hear someone else in the community sharing some of my concerns. I think this, I live in this neighborhood and I walk this street daily, so people like me are gonna be the ones watching it transform for better or for worse. I know we need housing. I know, as a potential homebuyer myself, I, it's difficult to find housing in Carrollton City. I know, and building high-density housing in the city limits is better than sprawl out in the county. I've lived in Carroll County for twenty years, and I've watched sprawl. I've raised my kids in the sprawl. I know that one of the problems when you come in and create these developments is you end up just living indoors because there is no shade. You're just, you take away a lot of the things that make a neighborhood charming when you pack so many houses close together. And I called the extension office today. I asked him, you know, "Am I crazy for bringing up historic trees? Is this a something?" And he said, "No, there's a lot of people who share this feeling." Like, it does create cleaner air, it creates love, it even protects the asphalt. It creates places where kids can play. If we have a green belt, you wanna be able to walk to it without melting. You wanna be able to go outside in your yard without just dying of heat. So there's a couple trees on that property that provide that shade. There are kids out there playing every day in that shade. That will be all gone. And so I think there are other people in the community who share that feeling, preserving the charm, preserving the shade, preserving some natural beauty, who don't speak up. And I would agree that if we could just maybe find a creative workaround, if we have one less house and save one large tree, wouldn't that be a creative, sort of innovative, Carrollton-specific innovation that we could do? That would make that neighborhood just a little different than all the other housing developments? So, just a thought to, again, ask the council to be thoughtful and maybe do things a little differently than they've done it out in the county. Thanks.
I'm Chris Reno. I live at 120 Renwood Lane, and this development would be directly across from me. I wanna amplify some of the comments that you just heard regarding density here. When I look out from my front door, I see a wonderful, it's practically a forest. And then to see all of that scraped away and replaced with Lego block housing, for which I would note, in these plans, the original submitted plan valued a recreation and amenity area and parking, but all of that's easily set aside for two more units. So in one, so it seems like the developer prefers to get their four units any way they can at the expense of recreation area, parking, the things that make, to give that, give that development an elbow room, which I think is important. So I think there are important issues of, I thought Amy was right on target when she said that bad decisions of the past, or maybe ill, you know, that the density of housing that I live in and that Amy lives in may not be ideal. I live a block away from Rome Street, and I see some beautifully designed houses packed in like Lego blocks, and they don't have yards. And evidently, it's my understanding, those units are not selling very well, and there's a whole lot of undeveloped, unbuilt space behind them as a result. So I just wanna amplify these voices and add my own voice of caution to approving a development of this density. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm Amy Hicks, and I live at 116 Spring Street. And first of all, I wanna thank them for purchasing this property. It is dilapidated and does need some improvement. Those homes are not occupiable as they stand, so we do appreciate that they have purchased this in hope to improve the area. Some things that I have concerns about are the number of units they're trying to fit on to the property, so I'd like for that to be limited and/or reduced, just because I do, I second what others have said about ensuring that we continue keeping like the historical feel and promote family, families moving in and having room and space for their kids to play. Also, with the increased number of units, I'm concerned about traffic in the area. It's directly across from the library. It's also near a very popular park where kids play. We've had to put speed humps on Spring Street just to reduce speeding, so when we bring in more cars, we have to worry about children getting injured as well. So I just want y'all to take that into account. The other thing is, I would like for us to discuss maybe setting some limitations, like I've seen you do previously, on the quality of materials that are used when building these homes. I don't know if we're at that phase yet. I can come back for another meeting if I need to for that. But I just wanna make sure, too, that design is consistent with the historical downtown feel. That's what, that's what made my husband and I move here. I mean, I graduated from West Georgia, and I loved walking downtown, and I love living downtown, and I wanna continue loving down here. Thank you.
Haley, can you address the construction?
Regarding the types of building materials, we did address that in our recommended conditions. We asked that they have multiple gables to give some architectural relief on the front. We asked that they use architectural shingles. We are binding them to the site plans that they're submitting. We also already have in place a vinyl ordinance, and that only allows up to thirty percent of front elevations to be vinyl. That include other types of siding with that. Multiple types is asked also shake, cement board, lap, or board and batten, cement board or masonry, to have different types of siding to give that visual relief as well, and to also make it look like a higher-quality home.
Is there anyone else that would like to...
Name's Walter D'Ambrosio, 216 Spring Street. I walk up there quite a bit, and it is dark, so I mean, if they bring this forward, I think it can help improve the neighborhood. But what we don't want to have happen, if we have another recession, is what they, what their track record is, is they can turn it into Section Eight housing or something else. We need some protection against that. Protect the people who are already in the neighborhood. We're not against progress. We just wanna make sure that our safety, our crime statistics don't change, and our housing values continue to go up. That's it. Okay? So make sure that you write some protections into this stuff for us. All right? Thank you.
I would like to say that, moving forward, and it may be in here somewhere visually, I mean, not visually, but written somewhere in these plans, but I would like to see, and I don't know if this is an invasion of privacy, but it would be nice to have photos of what the neighborhood looks like for us to see as well, so we can get a visual, does that make sense, y'all? So we can get a visual glimpse as to whether or not we feel as a body this is compatible with the neighborhoods. I would like to have driven down the street before this meeting, but it's my fault that I didn't do that. Does that make sense?
Gerald, it's just kind of a hole.
Oh, I mean, just the houses that they live in and they're talking about, I would like to see what those look like. Would Google Maps show me the facade of a house, or would it show me the roof of a house? Okay, I can see the front of the house on, okay. Well, I don't wanna do that. I want it to be done for me. I want it right here, so I like this. I don't wanna personally go do that. I'm just telling you, I don't.
Gerald, are you talking about the houses around the area?
Mm-hmm. I mean, if I got paid more money and had time in the day, you know, I'd love to sit and get on Google Maps and print that out. But yeah, if y'all could do that for us, wouldn't that be nice, faith? Y'all make what, a hundred times more than what I make, right?
We can certainly do that on future rezonings.
Thank you. That would be nice. Thank y'all very much. And I don't mean to step on anybody's toes. I'm a joker, y'all know that, but I'm kinda for real.
I need to make one point that's real important, and these are the things we think about at staff level when these things come forward. This property's already zoned multifamily, so they can go there and build apartments. So we were happy to see individual homes that looked like this, that were cottage-style homes. We thought that was a great improvement over what they could do. And again, it has a zoning that's been that way for a lo, long before I came here, so they had the right to do that. So we felt good about the kind of product they were bringing forward. And obviously, we wanna control that, that's why we have these kind of lists, but that was a just real important point everybody needs to know. It's certainly not our product. I mean, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a financial dog in this hunt. We just try to make sure that when somebody buys property, they build the best thing for the city. But again, they have the right to build apartments, and we were thankful that nobody was trying to do that.
I got something I wanna say about the project. My wife and I live at 209 Spring Street, and this project's sort of right behind where we live. Beautiful piece of property. It's gonna be a complex construction project. It's got a lot of dirt moving, a lot of utility replacement, and it's gonna be a very complex situation for the developer to be able to make any money at it. I'm sure of that. But it's also a very pretty place down there. We have deer coming up there constantly, you know, in our backyard and all of our other neighbors' backyard. They cross the road, they go into Walt's front yard and backyard, they're all over the place. And it's sort of a really, a really beautiful place back there. And I don't know what the fall is from an elevation standpoint, but it's quite large. I say thirty feet. Am I wrong about that? Thirty, forty foot? Yeah. And so there's tremendous amount of effort they gotta go in to put the storm drains and get this thing in a way. That means they're gonna have to take down all of the trees. There's no way in the world that they're gonna be able to get around with the amount of construction you guys had to tell me, but I don't see it happening without just about taking every tree down in that area. And that's, it's tough. There's a lot of really large growth trees down there, that if they could protect them, they need to do that. And so that part, we're all gonna lose that as part of our little community, and I hate to see that. The only other thing that I've got is, is the developer needs to have a really tough HOA. And somebody, the lawyer, whoever's gonna handle it for him, has got to monitor that in a real tough fashion, to make sure that people abide by the rules and the covenants in that HOA, to help to maintain the development like it should be, rather than this thing turning into things that we can see has happened in the past in our community. So, that's basically, that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Any more discussion up here with us?
Mr. Mayor, moving forward.
I'm Marion Chance at 214 Spring Street. My concern is certainly for the green space. But I think another concern of mine is the precedent. If this happens in our neighborhood, it can happen in any neighborhood, and the local color, the atmosphere of our culture can change very quickly if this is a slippery slope. If the number of units could be reduced by three or four and save some of the trees or some of the green space, I think that would help maintain the atmosphere for our community. Please consider it.
I'd like, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I may make a motion that we table this until the next meeting, so that we have more time to listen to the needs of our constituents and incorporate some of the things that they're bringing to our attention tonight in reference to trees, history of neighborhood, and flavor of neighborhood, if that makes sense. That's my motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna second it, but I am gonna vote against it. I know that sounds crazy, but I wanna explain. Again, to the audience and the people, I hear y'all. I hear what you're saying about maintaining the integrity of our neighborhood, protecting our neighborhood, but it is zoned for apartments. Right now, someone can build apartments out there, okay? I wanna say it again. Right now, someone can build apartments, and there's nothing we could do to stop that, meaning the city council mayor, 'cause that's the way it's zoned. So by actually allowing development to occur, we're actually protecting the integrity. We're basically making sure traffic doesn't get to a high volume. We're basically protecting from Section Eight housing. So I just want the neighbors to understand that. I hear y'all. I hear you. But I really feel like that if I vote in favor of allowing development going forward, I believe that I'm protecting you from the future. Because I can tell you, the city has been, since I've been on city council for four years almost, the city has been sued not once, not twice, but three times by developers over apartments. They have come to my house, they have served my wife with a lawsuit at nine-thirty at night. I know who these developers are, okay? I know their mentality, and, and so I really honestly believe that by allowing the housing to go forward, and I might lose, that we're actually protecting the integrity of your neighborhood. And I just want y'all to understand the reasoning behind that. So I will be voting against this motion table.
But they won't be building apartments in three weeks, which is when we'll meet again.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of Mr. Burr's motion, please raise your hand. All opposed. Motion dies. Thank you, though, Gerald.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we, which one do we call which one? I personally would like to make a motion that we adopt the original plan with the four townhouses. The original draft with a guest parking inside it, that we go ahead and approve this tonight.
that we go ahead and approve this tonight.
Mr. Mayor, does that include the recommended conditions that have been circulated?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Run over with the paper. I can't find half of it up here.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure what your motion is. You want, you're making a motion to approve the first plan, which is the townhomes.
Correct.
Okay.
It's the side plan that's been designated as the Townhome Side Plan and the list of fourteen conditions recommended by staff.
I will second that motion.
Gentlemen, if I could, Trey asked to be able to use concrete instead of GAB in four inches of asphalt. That's item thirteen. We really don't have a problem with that. With the Townhome option, that road will always be private. If they want to build it with concrete, that is okay with the staff.
So we will not, the city will not never take that over, right?
No, sir.
So it'll belong to the HMOA or the POA or going forward? Do we need to add that into this, Tim?
I would just add to item thirteen, an or. Tommy, how thick does that need to be? Well, Walt, you're the concrete man. How thick does it need to be?
Six inches.
Six inches of concrete. Three thousand PSI concrete.
Have a motion and a second. Assume you're ready to vote. If there's any more discussion, all in favor of the original site plan, including the four townhomes with the conditions set forth by the city, please raise your hand. All opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion passed for the townhomes. Item number four, board appointment, Carrollton Arts Commission.
The next item on your agenda are two appointments to the Arts Commission. Both members are currently serving, both Penny Ayers and Marilyn Glass. Their terms expired in July. And at this time, the Arts Commission is recommending that they be reappointed to the Arts Commission. These commissioners have been strong advocates for arts in the community, and their service has been appreciated by both staff and the remaining commission members. They've been very active at the center as both dispensees, as patrons. Their children, or at least Ms. Glass's children, have been very involved, highly involved in the facility and in the programs that the facility offers. Ms. Glass also has been in several of the performances at the center. Each of these candidates are, have a desire to grow the arts and more arts patrons in the community. And they certainly reach out to other members of the community to help us fill out our program. And we recommend that they be reappointed to the commission.
Eric, can you hang on just a second? Any comment, gentlemen?
So what, who was the first person?
Ms. Penny Ayers.
Okay.
She's a retired schoolteacher. And Ms. Marilyn Glass works at Tanner Health Systems.
Well, I move we reappoint them both to the Arts Commission at this time.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Board appointments, Carrollton Parks and Rec, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have three appointments coming up. We have Glenn McGinnis, who is stepping down. We also have Mr. Barry Glenn, who is stepping down, and Ms. Lori Blackman. They've all served for six years on the board. We have three people who are very interested in serving and are heavily involved with our Parks and Recreation Department. First is Ms. Julie Parrish. She's heavily involved with our Special Olympic Program and our Senior Center. And she's also volunteered over the last fifteen years with different programs that we have. The second is Mr. Eric Simmons. He's an assistant principal at Carrollton High School. I think he would personally be a good advocate for a good partnership with the school system. And the last is Ms. Vicky Andre. She is very involved with our Senior Center. And I also think it'd be nice to have someone representing the seniors on our Parks and Recreation Board.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this. I apologize, Peter. There's a gentleman I want to speak to that has mentioned to me he'd like to serve on the board. And I'll reach out to him again and see if he's still interested. So I'd like to make a motion to table this.
I second that.
Have a motion and a second to table.
Let me say, Peter, while you're here, I really appreciate the diversity. I think your board, and I want everybody to hear me say this, and there's no secret to how I feel about this, but I think your board reflects the city and what our city looks like. If you go about the town and meal around the stores and shops, our city looks like your board. And I think more of our city boards need to reflect what our demographics look like here in this city. And more city boards need to be inspired by the things that you do to make sure everybody and every segment of the population is involved, including seniors, because they're often forgotten about. So thank you for that, Peter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Vote on that. All in favor of tabling this the next month? Please raise your hand. All opposed. Thank you very much. Public hearing, 219 Millage Rate, Mr. Trippit.
Before Jim starts, I want to point out this is just a hearing. There's no vote. This is just a presentation on data that's required by law.
Thank you.
Thank you all. This is the second of the three required public hearings for the city in the setting of the 2019 Millage Rate. We had our first public hearing today at noon. The third and final public hearing will be on Monday, September the 23rd, at 12:00 PM here in the council chambers, followed by a formal vote. As you know, local governments around the area, school boards, county commissions, et cetera, are in the process of setting their 2019 Millage Rate for real property, personal property, automobiles, et cetera. And if you've been paying attention to that, no doubt you've heard terms like Millage Rate, Rollback Rate, Revenue Neutral, things like that. Some of this can be kind of confusing. And so I just want to take just a couple of minutes and give you a little background on this. In 1999, the Georgia General Assembly, under the Roy Barnes administration, passed legislation that required local governments around the state in setting their Millage Rate to make additions to their tax digest that were due to reappraisal of property, Revenue Neutral. Now, additions to the digest from new construction annexation, governments can keep. But additions to the digest from reappraisal, we have to make back Revenue Neutral, and we do that by going through a computation and computing what we call a rollback rate. I have about fifteen copies of that available, if anyone in the audience would like to see that. This is kind of a complicated process. It's a spreadsheet from the Department of Revenue where we key in last year's digest figures, and then we key in the current year's digest figures that we get from the Carroll County Tax Assessor's Office. And at the end of this process, based on new additions to annexations, additions to new construction, and then additions to reappraisals of property, it computes a rollback rate. That is contrasted against the actual Millage Rate that the city is proposing to adopt for the new year. And any difference or increase of the proposed Millage Rate over the calculated rollback rate, we have to advertise as a tax increase. And so based on the numbers here in this spreadsheet, our current Millage Rate that we're proposing, 4.6 mils, which was also the Millage Rate from last year, is contrasted with the rollback rate of 4.324 mils. That yields a 6.38% tax increase. We have made the appropriate advertisements in the local newspaper and the local press, issued the press releases. And so actually, the Millage Rate is .276 mils above the calculated rollback rate, and it's 6.38% percentage increase. With all that being said, Haley, if you will turn to the third page, these are just assorted documents here that we provide to the mayor and council. One, back one. Yeah, that's it. That's it. As part of their budget work session, as part of the budget process each year, we survey not only governments in the West Georgia area, but we've expanded that to regional area, Douglasville, Cobb County, et cetera. As you see, we are literally the lowest on that chart. In fact, we could raise our Millage two mils, which we're not proposing doing, and that would still put us maybe halfway in the midsection of that chart. And so I think it's important to say also that the city has not recorded an actual Millage Rate increase since 1991. And so we have a strong track record over many, many years of keeping the Millage Rate at a responsible level. Haley, if you'll go a couple of more pages down. Another document, keep on going. Another document that we use and give to the mayor and council each year, that Millage Rate survey that we just showed you, we take an illustration, we take a $200,000 house, and we basically compute the net taxable value of that property after applying the 40% ratio and deducting the standard homestead exemption. And you see the tax that each person would pay on that house in the various city locations around the area. If you take that same computation and apply the calculated rollback rate of 4.324 mils, you would actually see that the tax due is $329. That is a $21 increase, decrease, excuse me, over the current Millage Rate of 4.6 mils. So very minimal effect on the individual homeowner. Keeping the 4.6 mils would yield an additional $600,000 to the city, approximately 200,000 of that in automobile and about 400,000 in real property. I would like to point out that in the last couple of years, we've had to use between $1.5 million and $2 million. Within six months, we had two major casualty losses in the city, the fire station that got destroyed by the tornado and the recreation maintenance building that was destroyed by fire. To get those facilities replaced, rebuilt, back online and in service, fund balance the city's reserve approximately between $1.5 and $2 million. Also, in this package, the document that we provide to you on infrastructure projects that we're got currently considering, there is just over $3.5 million that are earmarked for city reserves to fund these projects. And we've got lots of drainage-type projects around the city, more than we can get to. And we were talking the other day that the average cost of a drainage project is somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000. And so they're not cheap. They're expensive to construct. Also, the city right now, it's important to point out, we have approximately $9 million in reserve. Financial standards recommend that the city keeps between three and six months operating reserve in its reserve fund balance. And so you take our current general fund budget of $28 million, our reserves would fund us between three and a half and four months. And so we're pretty close to where we need to be in keeping that recommended standard. And so that is just the background information that I wanted to share with you. Again, the final vote will be on September 23rd, and staff is recommending keeping the current Millage Rate of 4.6 mils.
Tim, would you go over one more time on a $200,000 house? What's the, if we hold it, what's, what the tax bill is coming up?
Yes. If we keep the current interest rate, Millage Rate of 4.6 mils, that would be an additional $21 increase in the tax bill as opposed to if you adopted the rollback rate of 4.324 mils.
And you're estimating this on a $200,000 appraisal?
$200,000 fair market value home. You assess it at a 40% rate. That leaves an 80%, $80,000 assessed value. You deduct the standard homestead exemption of $4,000, and that gives you a net assessed value of $76,000. And that's what the, you apply the Millage Rate to, and that's what the tax is computed on.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a few points?
Sure.
This is a very confusing issue. It's a very frustrating law to me because it requires that we advertise a tax increase where when what actually happened is property went up in value and the state required that it be reassessed. So the state requires properties are reassessed every three years. We don't do that. The county does that for us. We're thankful that they do. But again, that's not something we control. On this $200,000 home, if you own that home, you would get a total bill of $2,384 in taxes. The city only gets 350 of that. So that's a point. Everybody that lives in the city and they get this big tax bill, they think we get all that money. We don't. We get, again, 350 of $2,384. So, and then the real point and the real frustration to me on this law is that if your tax bill went up $1,000, we would get about 150 of that, right, Jim? I think it's $149 of that. If we rolled it back, that bill that went up $1,000, it would only go down nine, of that $1,000, you would get $9 back. And where that other money is going with the $600,000 we would lose, it goes, it's spread amongst all the other property owners, and their bill actually gets reduced. So this is a crazy law that got passed, like you said, in 99. And it, the entities like the county, which is very property tax-dependent, this is a lot of money to them. And when they roll it back, they get clobbered by it. So I just want to stress that, like Jim has said, we have by far the lowest tax rate of any entity in this area. We also have the lowest water and sewer rates. We have the lowest sanitation rates, and we're in the best financial shape in spite of that. If you live in Mount, Little Mount Zion, and I have a son that lives there, he pays more taxes than he would if he lived in Carrollton. And yet in Carrollton, he's using our rec department, he's using our green belt, he's using our pools, and he's using our Cultural Arts Center. So we provide all of that at a lower rate than any of our neighbors. So I just, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
That was a question I was going to have. You cleared it up. So if you live in Villarock and Mount Zion, Bowden, Temple, who have higher city Millage Rates, and now that the county, I think, school board has passed, didn't they increase their Millage Rate? Am I wrong? I don't want to throw them under the bus. I don't know.
County School Board and the city school board both maintained their.
Good, okay, good. I'm glad you corrected me.
Last year, yeah.
Great. But I think if you live in those municipalities, you pay a higher tax burden than the city of Carrollton, just like you said.
Absolutely. Those are shown there. I mean, Bowden's is almost twice ours. And again, some of these other cities, Cedar Town and Rome and all that, and I realize those are farther out, they're far more than twice ours.
Like I said, this is not something we're voting on tonight, gentlemen, which is information. And come back again September.
23rd.
23rd, 12 o'clock. Thank you, Jim. Anybody got any questions? Any more questions? Hearing none, that's good. Thank you very much, sir. Is there any more business coming forward this morning? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned.